Pursuits to the Oakland Public Meeting Act, the Sentinel and the South Jersey Times were notified of this meeting. It was also posted in the Mississauga Building and on the Township's press. Mr. Catchum?
Here.
Mr. Glacius?
Here.
Mr. DeSousary?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
And Chairman Greer.
Here. Okay, in the absence of Mr. Gaetano, we'll sit at our offices in the Indiana. All right, the events of the previous hearing, gentlemen, is there a motion? I make a motion for a first-class motion. Motion by Dana, second by Richard Glacius. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any extensions? No. Okay, first on our agenda tonight, is this the RLS one? This extension?
Yes, that's requested by letter.
Does ZB 23-11, in the name of RLS Rules, State of Newfield, are requesting taking an extension by letter?
Yes, you approved a minor subdivision. They have 190 days to report a deed. They didn't report a deed within that time. So their engineers sent a letter requesting an extension so they could go ahead and report the deed. There are no other changes, just they missed the deadline. It does not say, but I assume they're ready to go, so if you gave them...
I made a motion where you said it's 16 feet. It doesn't move faster according to these things. Okay, a motion by Dana DeSousary to extend it. Is there a second? Second by Richard Glacius. I guess the Federation do take part.
Mr. Catchum?
Yes.
Mr. Glacius?
Yes.
Mr. DeSousary?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
And Chairman Greer.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, ZB 23-12, and then, oh no, I'm sorry. ZB 23-13, in the name of K2 Properties LLC. Mike, everything in order with your motions?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Seth Broder. I'm here tonight on behalf of K2 Properties LLC. K2 Properties LLC owns the property located at 2141 Sheridan Avenue, which is in the RA zone. The property is behind Lot 32, which is also owned by the applicant. Tonight you'll hear the applicant explain that he is seeking to construct a single-family house on the lot 33, which is a permitted use in the RA zone. In order to do so, the applicant is going to ask this board for a few variances, namely relief from the requirement that there be lot frontage, as that lot is landlocked and has no frontage, as well as relief from a 75-foot front yard setback, as 50 feet is being proposed. In support of the application tonight, you'll hear testimony from Jim Lupinetti, who is the authorized member of the applicant, as well as professional planner Nancy Jamino and architect Quinn DeManna. So after the hearing tonight, hearing the testimony, the viewing exhibits, we respectfully request this board to approve my client's application and grant the necessary variances and waivers, if applicable. Thank you. With that, Mr. Burelli, would you like to swear in our witnesses?
You can bring all three of the ones.
Sure.
Chairman actually will take care of the swearing.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to the oath of testament.
I do.
May I have this, please? Professional, professional.
Nancy Jamino, J.A.M.A.N.O.W., professional engineer, professional planner, 192 Country Farms Road in Marlton, New Jersey.
Quinn DeManna, architect. That's D.E.M.E.N.N.A., 576 Benson Street, Camden, New Jersey.
Jim Lupinetti, L.U.P.I.N.E.T.T.I., owner of K2, with K2 Properties, and I'm also a builder as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If it pleases the board, I'd like to call Mr. Lupinetti as my first witness. I don't know the easiest way to...
Where do you want me?
I guess we can share the mic.
Easy enough.
Yep, okay. So Lupinetti, you're a member of K2 Properties LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
And K2 Properties does in fact own the property located at 2141 Sheridan Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. How long has the applicant owned that property?
I think roughly about eight months or so.
Okay. And the property was purchased in one entity, then switched to another entity of the K2, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And are you seeking the necessary approvals from this board to be able to construct a home on that lot?
Yes.
Okay. Was there an existing dwelling on that lot?
Yes, on the, yes, there was.
Okay. And what condition was it in?
Very poor.
High-sore?
You couldn't see any of it from the street. It was all overgrown and the house was, there was trees just kind of growing in and around it and it was, it was a nice high-sore, to say the least.
And that was demolished?
Yes.
And that was, the applicant demolished, had it demolished, is that correct?
Yeah, we did, yes.
Okay, okay. And K2 Properties LLC owns Lot 32 as well?
Yes.
Okay. And Lot 32 is in front of Lot 33?
Yes.
Okay. And both were purchased together, is that correct?
Yes.
At the same time?
Yes, as separate lots, yeah.
But on one deed?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so Lot 33, being behind Lot 32, that would make it landlocked, is that correct?
Correct.
And I note from the plan, which will be shown as an exhibit in a few minutes, that there's, there's going to be an easement, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, 28-foot easement?
Yes.
For access?
For access, yep.
Okay. All right, and I'm showing you, which I believe the board has, some pictures. Board has, okay. And I'd like to have these marked as P1, is that okay?
You do it as A1.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I was in court this morning and something different. Showing you what's been marked as A1, some pictures. Seven pictures. Do you recognize these?
Yes.
Did you take these pictures?
I didn't.
Okay. Do you want to just kind of hold up each picture and kind of walk the board through what you were shooting at the day you took these pictures, what you saw, what you could explain?
Yes, so this, this picture here is the front, basically standing towards the, where you see the edge of the truck here, that's where the easement would be to the left side of the property for the, for the front lot. It's just straight back.
Okay. And how about this picture?
That is, this is standing from the left side, kind of pictured in towards the property where the, where the easement would be.
Okay. And this picture, I noticed there's a road, is that Sheridan?
Yes, that is Sheridan.
What a show.
So this is just standing back on the opposite side of the street, just showing the, the front of the, the property.
I have a question. You're saying there was a home on 33 or 32?
It was 32, the, the front lot.
The front lot.
Correct.
Okay. Show this one.
And this is again across the street, just on the, kind of like the right edge of the property, showing in the front. This is all, all the way off to the side, to the right, to show, on an angle, but looking in.
And which lot? That's 32?
This is 32, yes. And this is, this is standing in Lot 32 to show where the break would start to be with the trees between each property. And this is the edge of the easement on the side to get back to the back lot as well.
Mr. Lupinetti, if you're granted approval tonight, will the applicant abide by all conditions imposed by this board?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I have nothing further for Mr. Lupinetti at this time, if the board so pleases ask some questions.
So you bought both these lots at the same time?
Correct.
Knowing that the back lot is, is landlocked?
They were, they were separate lots when we bought them with the same deed, and from what I understood, that they were already going for an easement, that the back lot was basically buildable when I first bought it.
I mean, I'm sure it's a buildable lot, but there's no access to it. And did you try to buy any property, any surrounding property around it?
No, they, they, they did mention coming through the back of where the, the power lines were, and I didn't even remotely entertain that to see it, and I spoke with the architect, and we thought it would be a better, much more appealing to just take a side, just have an access to the back from Sheridan, which is just a, a normal street, than to come from the other side.
What's going to happen to the front lot?
What do you mean?
Well, the front lot, you're using the middle lot or the second lot. What are you going to do with the front lot?
Well, the front lot, there's going to be a house on there as well, just kind of offset to the side within your setbacks, the setback requirements. So then the, there would just be a driveway along the left side of the, there's a tree line that separates...
What's the front?
I don't recall.
It's on your 65 feet. And, and where are you going to build the second house?
Pretty much right behind it.
Why wouldn't you build it behind the, the PSCNG easement? There's a lot of property back there, why wouldn't you want to put it way up, right on, behind the other one?
I mean, I was...
That's got to be a small...
It's, I have to look at the chart and see what it is.
That's the distance from the property line, the rear property line is Lot 32.
That's actually...
Beginning of the easement for PSC.
That's actually Nancy's...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, Ms. Jamino is going to discuss this variation.
Oh, that's...
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Just a quick question about your photos. I believe it's the second one, there's a yellow house or structure visible, is that the neighboring lot, or is that the existing building?
That's the neighboring lot.
Mr. Chairman, just a few questions first, before we dive into the, your testimony. How long, how long have you been a professional planner and engineer?
A lot of years, 35-plus years. Sorry.
And you hold licenses?
I hold a professional engineer's license in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, professional planner's license in New Jersey, and a certificate, municipal engineering certificate in New Jersey.
And through your, throughout your career, have you worked as a professional planner for townships?
I have. I, for 19 years I worked, well, actually for longer than that, I worked for a consulting engineering firm, similar to your engineer. I represented, I myself did five municipalities as their municipal engineer, their planning board engineer, zoning board engineer, joint land use engineer, whatever the engineer was at that time, and also as the planner for two of the five. And then since then, I was director of community development in Eastham Township and director of community development in Morristown Township, and I'm familiar with municipal land use law and land use applications.
And you've been qualified for boards such as this board as an expert?
Yes.
Okay. And, and you're familiar with the proposed application?
I am.
Okay, and you, did you walk the dirt? You saw the property?
I did.
So to speak?
I did.
Okay, great. So I respectfully request that this board recognize Ms. Jamino as an expert. Okay, thank you.
And I just, as an aside, in 1988, I was the board engineer for Franklin Township for one year. That was a long time ago. 1988, Paul Falble was the chairman, and Edith Cheeseman, I think ran, yes, at that time I don't think they had joint land use boards available, yes.
And I was a freshman in college.
Oh, stop it. All right.
Before you go, before you go into your presentation, I know I've already said that, but just one more question. Have you had the opportunity to review both the initial and revised letter from the township?
I have.
Professional, okay, great, wonderful. Okay, so if you can, and I'm going to ask that our easel stand up, and I would like to have this marked as A2, or you want me?
Here.
Wherever's easier for the board to see and still have access to.
Where's, I think a little bit side's easier.
Okay.
So this will be A2?
Yeah.
Is the edge of the end of the...
Okay, thank you.
If you could just walk us through.
So, I'll give you a little bit of orientation, which I know you're all very familiar with the property. And do we, do you mind if we move back a little bit, because I know these residents are interested as well, so.
You can see.
So, the bottom here is Sheridan Avenue. This is the property, the front property here is Lot 32. Lot 32 is 165 feet wide by 300 feet deep. Lot 33, which is the lot we're in to discuss, is 165 feet wide by 1,020 feet deep, it's 3.8 acres. The question that was asked is, I have to look at my notes, so. I have the distances here. If, because I analyze this too, if the house was to be built back here, it'd be over 700 feet back on this lot, plus the additional 300. So it'd be 1,000 feet off the road. No matter what kind of lot it is, if it's with an access easement, that's a long way to go back under a power line, and that's why I believe it was located up front here.
It doesn't have to be 1,000?
Well, it has to be outside of the PSCNG right-of-way.
Yes.
It can't be within the PSCNG right-of-way. So that's why it would be 1,000 feet back. You have 300 plus, I guess another 300, plus 350.
You're, you're, so the property up front, you're including that?
Yes, yes, because that's the distance off for an access. So yes, I am. You're right, yep. So the proposal on this is to have a 28-foot access easement on the western side of the lot that would access this lot. It would provide the driveway and any utilities that would be needed to service the property. It is an on-site well and septic, but if it would be any, nobody has phone anymore but cable or anything else, it would go through that easement. There are two variances being requested, the access plus front yard. The front yard is proposed to be 50 feet when 75 feet is required by your ordinance. The 50 feet really is to keep it a little bit away from the power lines. So, again, I'm going out of order on my notes trying to address your, and I'll have to go back to this. So, you know what, let me go back to my presentation if you would. I think I answered those questions first, but let's do this, okay? So that's a general...
You still have the statements?
Not right this second.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Okay. So, Lot 802, Lot 33, which is proposal 2141 Sheridan Avenue, is a parcel that is 165 feet wide by 1,020 feet deep. It's 3.86 acres. It is located 300 feet from Sheridan Avenue. Lot 32 is located in front. Lot 33 is a vacant property that includes a 350-foot PSCNG right-of-way that bisects the property from east to the west. The applicant proposes to provide a 28-foot wide access easement along the western property line of Lot 32. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family home on Lot 33. The single-family home is a permitted use in the RA zoning district. A variance is required from ordinance section 253-107B3 for lot frontage, since the lot was previously created as a landlocked lot and has no frontage on an approved street. The 28-foot access easement will provide the required access between an approved street of the municipality and the lot, as required by the municipal land use law, section 40, colon, 55D-35. This access provides adequate access for firefighting and emergency vehicles necessary for the protection of the health and safety of the residents in the area. The driveway would be constructed of materials able to withstand the weight of a vehicle needed to serve the property, as required by the fire official. This addresses item number five of the board engineer's letter. A frontage variance is requested, since when the lot was created, it was created without frontage, which creates a situation uniquely affecting this property. This configuration has existed for many years. There are several lots along Sheridan Avenue that are deep. However, these lots have frontage on Sheridan Avenue. Lot 33 does not. The access easement essentially provides frontage for the lot. A question may arise as to why a subdivision is not proposed as a flag lot. The required 150-foot frontage cannot be provided, since the overall lot width is 165 feet. If a flag lot is proposed, variances are created for both Lots 32 and 33. The proposal before the board today will only require a variance for Lot 33. I believe the hardship was created by the prior owner and the proposal before the board addresses the relief requested. A variance is required from ordinance section 253-107B4A for front yard setback. The ordinance requires a front yard of 75 feet. A front yard of 50 feet is proposed. Lot 33 is located 300 feet from the street, so essentially the setback for the, from the right-of-way is proposed to be 350 feet. Lot 33 is encumbered with a 350-foot wide PSCNG right-of-way located on the property. The applicant desires to construct the house away from the right-of-way and believes the 50-foot front yard proposed allows for this by proposing approximately 60 feet behind the proposed structure until the PSCNG right-of-way begins. The PSCNG right-of-way is located about 160 feet from the front lot line of 33. The tree buffer shown on the grading plan is approximately 60 feet deep. This addresses item six of the board engineer's letter. The tree buffer, as well as the stormwater management that is proposed for Lot 33, will help to infiltrate the stormwater while keeping a natural buffer. This addresses item seven of the board engineer's letter. The grant to this variance is related specifically to Block 802, Lot 33. The purpose of the land use law will be advanced by the deviations of the zoning ordinance. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The benefits of the deviation will substantially outweigh any detriment, and the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance of Franklin Township. The construction of a new home in this area will be a benefit to the neighborhood and to the township. Some of the goals of the master plan focused on the following: retaining the rural character of the township, which this does not change the rural character; preserve the quality of life, this can help to enhance the life of the family who benefits and moves to this community; maintain a safe and attractive residential environment. This goal is met with the proposal to add and update the housing of the front lot and the area, which is a beautiful area; large lots that can support a septic system. This lot is 3.86 acres and can support a septic system for the proposed residential use. I represent that the application presented addresses the goals of the master plan and has not a negative impact.
How big is that little square between the rear of Lot 32 and the beginning of the easement?
Okay.
PSC, that's a smaller piece.
32 and the PSC and G?
Probably one of 32, the rear property.
Okay.
And the beginning of the easement, the PSC and G.
I have that somewhere. Yeah, I have it in my other, I'm going to hold it here.
98 feet.
So it's 98 feet by 160 block. And the property is 1,200 feet deep.
1,020 feet, yeah.
And there's an identical lot on Sheridan that has a flag lot. And I'm still confused why you wouldn't have gone for a subdivision for a flag lot, because you, you need variances as well for this. And all you would have done is, you need a variance for the front, for a frontage on...
Both lots.
On both lots.
I would say that's something, if the board would think that would be a better solution, we could probably go with. We thought the access easement essentially provides the flag of the flag lot to begin with, but...
The easements create problems with homeowners.
I totally understand where you're coming from.
You know, it's fine for the two, when they start, but if someone sells, then it sometimes has neighbors have problems.
I, being director of community development for 13 years, I understand 100% what you're saying with that. And it was just...
And again, you, you bought a piece of property that you knew was landlocked.
I, I, well, I don't want to speak for Mr., I think he had, well, it was created that way. Why was it created as a landlocked lot and not a flag lot back at that time? Then, then this owner's come back. I think that if the board would be more inclined to approve a flag lot, we could, we would consider it.
We can. I don't think it would be here, or it would be for the planning, or the planning board to do that.
And you know, with the other thing, excuse me?
I don't think a flag lot would be a lot better option, because in fact I'm trying to go through problems with an easement right now.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I just say that too, because I've been in other municipalities that don't like flag lots, so it's really...
We viewed both options and...
I don't like the flag lot, I'm not saying they're white.
Right. We just chose the one option we thought would be, would cause less, less variances.
Yeah, it does.
I think it's the obvious question, nobody's asked, yeah, I guess we're going to, but you own both lots, so why wouldn't they be combined and you have one house, just like everybody else has on that street? That seems like, sort of like the neighbors.
Well, I think Mr. Lupinetti just alluded to it when he was testifying, that he believed that there was an access. So, I, and again, I shouldn't say much more, because I'm not testifying for him, but...
That's what he testified to.
And, and, you know, buyer beware, maybe, you should have looked into that more, I can't, you know. So hindsight's always 20/20, right? So.
Dave, do you have any comments, or why don't we go through your, your report?
I don't have a whole lot left in my report. Jamino, you know, kind of touched on all the items, but, but the thing to think about is that Lot 32 that's in front, that's already an undersized parcel. We need 1.5 acres in the zone, that's about one acre.
May I comment on that, please? I'm sorry to interrupt. Your zoning officer, I specifically spoke to him about that, and he said since it was created prior to a certain date, that was acceptable, because that size was the acceptable lot size.
I wasn't trying to say it wasn't a...
Oh, I apologize.
Can I finish?
I apologize.
So, it's an undersized lot for the zone, while to point it out, it's maybe a grandfathered lot, it's... It's already an undersized lot for the zone. I understand why they tried to do the easement because when you put the 28-foot wide easement on the western side, then you're down, you don't have lot frontage anymore because you only have 165 foot width now. You take 28 feet off, you can be under the 150-foot standard. It'll also dictate side yard setback relief because the house is proposed now is 15.9 feet from that proposed easement line or what would be a subdivision line. So doing that flag lot subdivision creates a whole host of other issues also. I agree with the board members that a subdivision on a flag lot is much better than an easement. And we always try to stay away from that as to the extent possible. And then unfortunately, this Lot 33, this landlocked parcel, has such a small amount of distance between the PSE and G easement and the back of Lot 32. We were testifying, it's only 98 feet of width, and that effectively is going to be the lot size we're talking about because you can't build in that PSE and G easement. There's just a host of issues here that you know about that it's just, it's a difficult ask for this particular one. And if you look at the neighborhood, if you look at the tax map, you know, every lot, you know, by and large, is that 1,300 feet deep, you know, 165 feet wide, 1,300 feet deep, all the way down the neighborhood.
They all have one house.
Generally, I mean, there are two lots, you know, a couple lots next to this particular one, but by and large, the whole neighborhood is that 165 by 1,300.
But there are two lots. I'm looking at right now on Grand Avenue, flag lots.
Yeah. At some point in time, somebody did flag lots back then. You know, ordinance doesn't really have a flag lot.
55 isn't so bad.
Right. Right. I hear what you're saying.
A lot of lots are that way in Franklin Township, even less.
Yeah. You know, often we see when you have these deep lots that maybe most people would come in with the flag lot subdivision. In this instance, there's just a couple in that whole lot. And frankly, don't know how the planning board would act or react to a flag lot subdivision.
May I correct something I said on that distance, please? I apologize. I was quickly looking at my notes. 97, 98 feet is to the rear of the lot. Let me show you. 98 was to here, the end of the house. Then I calculate another 60 feet. So this area would essentially be 165 by 160, 158. But still, I mean...
It's 165 by, I thought he just said 98.
And that's what I said, and I'm correcting myself. I apologize. I quickly looked at my notes incorrectly because I'm adding it up again. So 97 was to the rear of the house, and then it's about 60 feet from there. So I apologize. In my quickness to look at my notes, I shouldn't have checked myself. It's still to your same point, but it's a small amount.
Are you, Dave, have you finished with your comments?
Yeah.
How about we spend some time talking about this other, just open up the bubble. Your day. Motion by Dan DeCesare, second by Richard Lacyus. All in favor?
Aye.
Did anyone here from the public like to be heard regarding this application? Please come forward. Raise your right hand, please. Make sure to tell the truth about the test right you're gonna get.
Yes.
Name and address.
John Grasmick, G-R-A-S-M-I-C-K, 2140 Grant. I built my home in 1990. And I built my home in 1990. I have a flag shape. Their front yard, their backyard noise is my front yard noise.
Where are you, what lot are you?
2140.
No, but what?
Oh, Grant.
802, I think it is.
802?
Alpha Grant, some lot.
Right, Alpha Grant.
We would be right behind you. We don't have addresses like that. We have lot numbers.
Oh, okay. I don't know lot number.
You said you're directly behind this property, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Sir? Mr. Mayor for Chicago. This is the lot in question, this yellow one?
Yes.
Where are you?
I'm on Grant.
This flag lot, right? That's not a flag lot. That's a flag lot.
Well, because the lot property was a lot, you have 30 foot flag.
And you're talking about this lot here?
Yeah.
This little narrow, this little narrow piece here that opens up?
Yes.
So your lot is 5.01? Lot 5.01? Okay.
And there, I go my front porch, and I hear my neighbors up front. I hear the conversations. I see the barbecue. I hear all that. Flag-shaped properties, when we went there, they said this is the last township is going to put in flag-shaped properties. It's not going to be anymore. I mean, it's a pain in the neck, but that's a buffer zone. It's landlocked. Leave it alone. It ain't hurting nothing. I mean, you got nature back there. Animals gotta go somewheres. You can walk back there. It's perfect. Now you want one home, we got the letter, now you want two homes. I mean, you can't build on the first one.
Do you object to his...
Yes, I am.
Home one on that lot?
Yes, I am. I just don't see the need for it to put two homes down instead of one. I mean, he's got that buffer zone. Leave it a buffer zone. I mean, because you've got all those properties from mine all the way down to Sheridan. They can't subdivide. They can't. It's all dead ground. You go back there for quite a few hundred feet and walk, and there's nothing but woods. I object to it because you go back there, you see there, you're going to see homes. If I wanted to see homes, I'd move to Washington Township, which is ugly, actually. You know, I worked there, I lived there. It's horrible. So just, I object to it. Just leave it alone. There's no need for it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Raise your right hand, please. Make sure to tell the truth about the test right you're gonna get.
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
Bill Morris, 585 Oak Avenue, Malika. I think it should be denied because of behind the 2023 taxes. That it shouldn't even be heard, being delinquent in taxes. Mike, if you need this for backup, it was printed at 6 o'clock tonight.
I don't know. Literally, they check it when the application comes in, as far as the checklist. So I'm not sure about that. I don't do that part of it.
Okay.
Yes, taxes should be paid.
But if you guys want this, I can...
Should be covered.
Give it to you.
I mean, they have to get covered, so.
But it's two quarters of 2023 that are not paid. It's not the taxes for this quarter.
I know. Let's have the attorney.
Respectfully, all taxes have been paid. We wouldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, sir. This is off the township website.
I'm just telling you taxes are paid.
It's your word against the official township website.
Well, technically, that's hearsay, but yes.
How's it hearsay?
It's hearsay because the...
When did he purchase the property?
Sorry?
When did he purchase the property?
Eight months ago. Seven months ago?
So the taxes would have had to be...
Yeah.
According, I said, according to the tax records, it is not paid.
Okay.
And we'll look into it, but everything...
Then it should be delayed until the issue's resolved. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? Raise your right hand, please. Make sure to tell the truth about the test right you're gonna get.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Paul A. Ross Milso, R-O-S-M-I-L-S-O.
Get in front of the mic, please.
Paul A. Ross Milso, R-O-S-M-I-L-S-O, 2163 Sheridan Avenue. I own the property directly adjacent to these lots that are in question, I believe. From the pictures that you were seeing, you mentioned a yellow house. It's probably mine that you're seeing in the house. Essentially, this is building a second house behind the house that was there when I bought the lots, my lot, 20 years ago. My neighbor bought next to me. I assumed that the lot next to me was one single lot all the way to the back. I guess that was a mistake, knowing that. But my lot runs all the way back to the power lines. My house sits back about 130 feet off of the road. So essentially, putting the second house behind the other house is essentially in my backyard where I'll be looking at their front yard. I'll have them looking at my back deck constantly. I feel like I'm right on top of somebody. I'm concerned about what the value of that, of two houses next to mine is due to my value of my house and my property. Roughly, when I built my house, it was $350,000, including property and the house. I'm not sure what size houses they're planning to put on that lot. I have a four-bedroom, three-car garage house. You know, I'm concerned that there's not enough room for putting houses there that are comparable in size to what I have and will detract from my value. It will also impact the nature, as this gentleman said. I have deer to come right up back to my back deck. Having another house there that close will impact the amount of nature that can come out into the backyard as well.
All right, but thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Also, if I may, I know that the, you know, I think he assumed that he could do this and cut all the trees down in the back lot six months ago.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward. Raise your right hand, please. Make sure to tell the truth about the test right you're gonna get.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Monique Moore, 2175 Sheridan Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, so I am two properties over. I'm Mr. Paul's neighbor, and so I just came up to kind of replicate his feelings about the property. So when we purchased the property, that property has been there and has been vacant for as long as I could remember, but we did just think it was one property. So building one property on that lot, no problem with, but the two properties, we do feel like there's an eyesore and will impede a little bit on our privacy. Just from where we are, we can see over to the back. Paul does have some privacy. You can't see directly in his lot, but adding that other house, that second house in the back, we just don't feel comfortable with him. We don't, we wouldn't be comfortable, and we're against it as well. So, yeah, that's it. All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? Raise your right hand, please. Make sure to tell the truth about the test right you're gonna get.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Ralph Travoloni, 802 Marshall Mall Road. After hearing the testimony this evening, I really don't believe there's a hardship this evening because the applicant purchased these two lots as is. So if you strike out the word hardship, I don't know what grounds you have to grant a C1 variance. And should you deny the C1 variance this evening, I can presume the applicant will come back again in front of the township to the planning board. And if that's the case, I'm going to speak for myself. I sit on the planning board, I'm the vice chair, and in hearing the application and the testimony this evening, I would assume they would be asking for a flag lot. And typically, flag lots are not granted unless there's hardship. Well, we just ruled out hardship, so that takes the lion's share.
Speaking on behalf of the planning board.
I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my own personal vote, okay? I would vote against the application for a flag lot because I don't believe there's a hardship. The other reason I would vote against it is because typically, when I vote for a flag lot, it's typically a parent to a child or a brother to a brother, some family relationship. I believe in this particular application, there would be two separate owners with no family tie. And for those reasons, I would vote again against the flag lot subdivision. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? I make a motion to approve both resolutions. Motion by Dan DeCesare, second by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. Propose any extension.
Sorry.
Okay, you want to make any further comments?
Just if we could have one minute.
Sure. Any other comments, Dave, you have?
No, I think the hardship is really focus on it. That's whether they carry that burden of saying on the blocks, and they could combine them.
After consideration and listening to the testimony tonight, questions proposed, we're going to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Prejudice means they can bring it back again if they wish. They changed it.
Thank you.
Wouldn't preclude you from going to the planning board.
Oh, I know.
We need a motion, I may... Motion by Richard Lacyus, second by Dan DeCesare. You know that, right?
Mr. Catch, Mr. Lee, Mr. DeCesare, Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Chairman, brief.
Yes. Okay, the application was withdrawn and...
No house.
We have two resolutions, the RLS, New Field, and we have... So regarding the ocean food and fuel, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that Dave and I both received a call from Ed DiArmito from CME, the township engineers, and they have some issues with the landscaping around the septic. They're saying landscaping around the septic should not be, or cannot be permitted. So they're making some changes to the landscaping. I want to make sure the board is okay with if Dave works with them and with CME and they come up with a solution on the landscaping. Do you accept that? If not, that'll have to come back. Are you okay with it?
What happened was the septic system was designed by somebody else. It was larger than shown on the EDA plans, and since Ed from CME also sits on the, as the consultant to the county for septic or something, he wants to make sure they enforce the regulation that there's no landscaping within 10 feet of the septic. So that forces some of the landscaping to be moved around on site. That's what we're talking about.
Any objections that Dave handles to working with CME on that landscaping issue?
I trust.
Do we all have any issues? Okay, that's the resolution. Right, Mike?
Yeah, there's two resolutions, the ocean food and fuel and the RLS.
Any issues with RLS with CME?
No.
Make a motion to approve both resolutions, plus 311 and 312. Second by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. Propose any extension. Okay, Secretary's report?
I don't have it on here, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. I added some things on the website for the zoning board application. It was actually missing the application part of it. It was just the, what was the...
The notice of publication.
Yeah, notice of hearing and publication for, I don't know, I took over this position in April, and that's what they had been using. It wasn't an actual application. So I've added the actual application. We've added the checklist that the engineer uses, and then also we added a statement for applicants to sign because I've had some issues with denials paying their escrow after they were denied. So we added a statement where they signed as part of the application stating that they know that no matter what the outcome is of their hearing, that they were still responsible for paying the commission's out of escrow.
I think they probably do that.
Well, they probably do.
So they're not going to pay, they're not going to pay, right?
But the township does have an ordinance that we can summon them if they do not pay. So if it states that, it means state like that they now have to sign.
All right, good job, Ms. Ray. Anything else, Mike? Anything else on the motion to the jurors? I make a motion by Dan, second by Jim Hatcher. All in favor? Aye. I propose this meeting adjourned. I propose meeting adjourned.